Good evening. On behalf of my colleagues and central office staff, I'd like to welcome you to the Shrewsbury School Committee Meeting of February thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. Our meeting tonight is being televised thanks to the work of Mr. John McDonald and the Shrewsbury Media Connection. This meeting will be rebroadcast on Channel twenty-nine until our next regularly scheduled meeting on February twenty-seventh. It will also be available for viewing on SMC's website. Before we begin our agenda this evening, I would like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of two Shrewsbury Educational Leaders we have lost since our last meeting. Dr. John P. Collins served as Superintendent of Shrewsbury Public Schools from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen ninety-four and was a transformational figure for the district. Mrs. Ellen Myers served at the district in a number of roles, including as Assistant Principal at the high school and as the district's Director of Special Education. Please join me in a moment of silence in memory of Dr. Collins and Mrs. Myers. Thank you. The first item on our agenda is public participation. Public participation provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school committee and is at the top of our agenda at each regular meeting. Tonight, no one has expressed interest in addressing the committee. Those wishing to do so in the future should contact the chairperson in advance of the meeting, and you will be recognized for up to three minutes. The next item on the agenda is Chairperson's and Members' Reports. Colleagues, anything to report? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Palich. First, let me add my condolences on the loss of Dr. John Collins and Ms. Ellen Myers. They were both wonderful leaders for the school district, certainly knew Dr. Collins well, although didn't have the opportunity to work with him. And the impact he had on this district as a leader is still felt today in many ways. And he was a consummate educator. Ellen Myers, I did have the privilege of working with for a number of years, both as a fellow Assistant Principal, as well as a principal when she was the Director of Special Education. And she was an outstanding leader who did really excellent work for students. I think the fact that both of them were fierce advocates for students, were very much not only led with brilliant minds, but with huge hearts. And they certainly had a lot to do with forming the culture that we still have today that serves students well and the community well. And their great losses, and we certainly send all our condolences to their families, of course, including Patrick Collins, Dr. Collins' son. Some of the excellent work that our students do continues on. We're very pleased to report a variety of things happening in our schools that represent the best of what our school district's about. This, just yesterday, we had our annual Black History Month Assembly. The Black History Committee of high school students did an outstanding job. It was a combination of speaking, multimedia presentations, dance, singing, poetry, as well as musical performances as well, all on the theme of unity. And it really was an outstanding presentation that really focused and was very touching in many ways relative to the contributions of African-Americans over the history of our country. In addition, yesterday and today, it was the annual Science Fair at Shrewsbury High School in that we had some outstanding projects I was able to attend yesterday. Really sophisticated research projects, as you've seen from time to time over the years. The students, as part of their research methods classes, and some who choose to do it on their own. And we'll know soon which students are moving on to the district level at WPI. We also have had several students recognized recently, both in the Performing Arts and Speech and Debate. We had a number of students selected at the high school level for the All-State Music Competition. We'll send those names out via the listserv. The Central District, many students from the middle school level were qualified for that level. We also had a Visual Arts Competition at Annmaria College. It happens annually. We had a number of students recognized. And we had a record number of students qualify for Nationals in one of the qualifying Speech and Debate tournaments. So lots of students continue to do excellent work and very pleased to see these other examples beyond the day-to-day classroom work our students are doing to represent our community. And that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The next item on our agenda is a timed scheduled appointment with the Shrewsbury High School Esports State Champions. In its inaugural year, the esports program at SHS generated a tremendous amount of interest and multiple teams were formed. One team advanced to compete at the MSAA League of Legends on January twenty-eighth. And the SHS Gatekeepers team finished as the Fall Two Thousand Eighteen Esports Champions. Team representatives are here with us tonight to talk about their successful season and their state championship win. I'll turn it over to Mr. Vazidlo, who will introduce the team to us.
Great. So thanks for having us tonight. It's, you told me last year, I'd be sitting before you with four members of their esports team at Shrewsbury High School evening. Having an esports team and then capturing the state championship, I didn't envision this at all. This fall, to give a little background, this fall, the M S A put out a call for all schools in the Commonwealth, particularly secondary schools, to try and identify students who might be interested in playing esports. And they, I think what they've seen is a, the economy of online gaming and also streaming. So they put it out there, there's a company called PlayVS outside, out in California that partnered with the M S A. And as a result, I believe we had thirty-four school districts participate in it, up to sixty-something teams. And they worked through the fall. We initially put out a survey to garner interest, and we had over a hundred responses. So we knew we were onto something right away. And I believe we had approximately between forty and forty and fifty students participate actively throughout the fall. I'm gonna let each member of the team introduce themselves. They'll introduce themselves, say what year they are, and then I'll let them talk a little bit about their season, how the structure of the season went. The game is called League of Legends. We played. Some of the audience, the viewing audience, might know it. But it requires a lot of skill, strategy, teamwork, collaboration. They truly play as a team. And we can talk a little bit more about our experience down at Gillette Stadium for the state championship. So I'll turn it over to Tommy.
So my name's Tommy Wang, and I'm the captain of the team, and I'm also a senior.
I'm Jerry Do. I'm a junior.
My name is Jerry Deng. I'm a senior.
My name is Jack Doyle, and I'm a junior.
So basically, esports is like a normal sport that you would see, but it's online. As shown in the picture, this is where we played. And before I talk anymore, I'd like to thank the school administration and MSAA for the opportunity we've been given to play. Because seeing that this is the first year that this has ever happened, it's incredible, and it's amazing. And we did bring home the state championship. So it's pretty nice to see that. And so we did play the game League of Legends, and we had a total of twenty teams playing. So each team consists of five players, and we are against another set of five players on this online battlefield. And the goal is pretty much to destroy their base, which is the objective. And so we had a total of twenty players, and then we also had substitutes for each team. Each team had around two to three substitutes. And the records for the teams as follows is ten and two for our team, the Gatekeepers. We also had Team D H U, which went seven and five. Team N P G went seven and five. And also Team T M A, which went seven and five. That was for the regular season, which was for about three to four weeks. And then after that, we fortunately all made it to playoffs. And the playoffs matches, we went five and oh, which won us the state championships. D H U went one and one. N P G went zero and one. And T M A went three and one.
T M A went zero and one. And N P G went three and one.
But as shown in the next slide, we did play at the Gillette Stadium in Showcase Live. So we were basically on the right-hand side, and Newton South High School was on the left-hand side. And they're a pretty tough opponent. But we managed to go two and one against them in the best-of-three match.
So for those that don't know, if you're looking at that stage, each one of those, these are really high-end computers. But there's a panoramic screen there. But on top of the panoramic screen is also a camera which they livestreamed through Twitch, which is a social media site, which actually streams all over the world. And we were one of the featured events for that evening. And I think if you see those little divider between teams, so you can't look at what's happening on each, the strategy of each team. But there's also, if you looked to the far right, there's another screen. There's three screens basically set up at the stadium or at Showcase Live. Long story short, is they started playing the games with a three-minute delay. So there's no, you can't livestream through Twitch while you're playing to try and find out the strategy of people. So I learned a lot with this group of guys, this, and Veris Rosari, who was on the team as well. So I learned a lot watching this. I think I was impressed when they sat down, put on soundproof headphones, and you hear Tommy screaming more than anyone else on the team. But there was some strategy involved. So maybe we could talk a little bit about that from the other folks on the team.
So as regards to strategy during the season, the nature of a lot of online games right now is you are able to understand your opponent through data recorded by the company that you have access to through various sites. So during the regular season, by using the username of our opponents, which was listed through PlayVs, we were able to, in effect, scout the other teams without having played them before and learn some of their strategies, what they're, were going to try to throw at us, be ready for all that. And also find out what their strongest assets were. Because at the beginning of each game, there's a ban phase in which each team has three bans each, and then you each get three picks, and then two more bans each, and then the last two picks for each team. And in that ban phase, if they had one specifically strong champion, we could target it and alleviate that sort of pressure on our team to not have to face their most practiced or best strategy. And that would just be the pre-match, basically, efforts. But in the game, it was also a whole other ballgame. You had different positions laid out for each person on the team. And for the subs, many of them had to fill in multiple positions. Tristan, who was our sub, played, I think, four positions this year. So it was necessary to have some flexibility in that regard. But in each of the positions, you have your own responsibility, and you have to accomplish different things to meet your goal and help your team succeed. And to do so, you can't do it alone. It almost always requires teamwork and collaboration, which is part of the reason it was so successful this year. Because it went off the idea of teamwork and collaboration between students instead of simply just raw mechanical skill, which was something that a lot of people, at first glance, might think this would be about. So it was really good on the MSAA and PlayVs to choose a game like League of Legends, League of Legends, that focused so much on teamwork rather than individual prowess.
So we talked about twenty-first century skills, and we talked about teamwork and communicating. Clearly, this, the members of this five team did a really fantastic job throughout the season. Interestingly, interestingly enough, both, two of our four teams that competed this year ended up in the semifinals. We were hoping for a Shrewsbury versus Shrewsbury final, but that didn't happen, which would have been nice. We, when we traveled to Gillette, the team went down early. I think we set up, I think we set up around three-thirty, four o'clock. And then they had a technical glitch which delayed the match for about, what, two hours?
Two hours, yeah.
About two hours, so we're in a waiting period for a one-in-five-hundred-thousand server glitch or whatever they described, so.
It was like in forty minutes or something of us onstage. There's like a thirty-minute pause allowance for the game because if there is a technical issue and you can quickly resolve it, any team has access to the command slash pause during the game. So you can pause play, delay it, get the issue resolved, and go back. But there's a thirty-minute limit on it, so you can't use it strategically or be malicious with it. And we went through that entire thirty-minute limit of pausing, going off and on between, we're playing again, then immediately paused, which was quite frustrating.
It was a long night. Most, most state championship matches in traditional athletics might be a two, two-and-a-half, three-hour endeavor. Maybe four with travel. They were at Gillette Stadium for six hours, minimal. I think we finished, it was about ten, ten, a little after ten o'clock when we finally completed the match. So it was pretty, it was really outstanding. I think a big shout out to Steve McKinstry, who's our coach. He's also our IT specialist. He coordinated and was a former player of League of Legends, or at least knew the lingo, unlike the principal or seemingly anyone in the high school that's not gaming. But these, these young men are fantastic, and their teammates were outstanding throughout the season. I picked up the trophy on the way over here. This is the trophy they received. It's a traditional trophy that would be much like they'd receive if it was basketball or soccer or whatever it is. And we also, you might have seen this in either Mr. Nevada or Mr. Lozot, who also attended the event, or Mrs. McKinstry, were posting on Twitter the pictures of the state championship. That's Mr. McKinstry on the left, who's a coach, so. These guys will answer any questions you might have.
Excellent. Well, congratulations. Colleagues, questions and comments? Mrs. Gonzano.
Congratulations. What a marvelous achievement. For those of us who don't know a lot about gaming, could you give me an example of what teamwork and collaboration looks like in real time, or maybe your championship game?
So around, like in our championship game, we won the first game like very easily. But then the second game, they came in with a new strategy that like we weren't used to. And then we basically lost that game because we weren't communicating very well. But the most important part was, after that, the second game, which was the loss, was we went back to a room, we discussed what went wrong, and then we were able to make up a strategy or make up, make up a strategy to pick better and like communicate well with each other to like figure out how to defeat their strategy because most likely they're gonna try it again. And we, we managed to win the state champions with their game.
Typically, typically within a game, there is an IGL, which is an in-game leader, which usually does the shot calling. But our team, we do have one, which is me. But everyone also consists of adding and talk and communicating. And within a split second, while we're probably doing a fight with the other team, we would hurry and discuss really, really quickly while we're fighting, what we would do, what our next steps would be, so that we would maintain that we're at least three to five steps ahead of the enemy team to guarantee like a huge lead against them and stuff.
Like what's important is, what I see on my screen is not the same as what others see on their screen. So it's important for me to call out what, what like the others are doing and then make sure everyone's on the same page and.
That's great.
Or another thing is, sometimes you see something that somebody else didn't see. Like there's an ability that nearly everybody runs in this game that's technically optional. It's called flash, and it's an instantaneous repositioning tool. And it's very important because it's on a five-minute cooldown, and the games last thirty to forty minutes usually. So like when they use that, if you see it and can call it out, you can capitalize on it. And it's a really big moment in the game. And there's things like these that you have to communicate to your teammates because it can change how you attack a situation. And also, touching on the state championship, basically after the first game, we didn't make any changes. Whereas Newton saw what worked for us and the shortcomings of their own team and craft around that, trying to basically tear apart what we had done and force us onto something different while trying to utilize what they had originally planned better. And from the second game to the third game, in that transition, we basically did the same thing, looked at what worked for them. We changed our original three bans from which it stayed constant through game one and two. We kept one of them and changed the other two to specific champions that were a problem in the second game that led to that loss. So from that strategic aspect, it would be very important to understand as a team what went wrong and how to fix it, be able to communicate that. And like Tommy said with the in-game leader, you have an in-game leader, which for the most part can be responsible for your macro calls. But individual players and individual situations, they're not always involved and might not always have the best perspective on the fight. So you have to be able to quickly and efficiently communicate with your teammates. It usually goes to short bursts or words that you can both understand. A lot of the times, it would be calling out a specific person you want to target because they're the biggest threat to you in that fight. Or some other variation, like we should do this, we should do this, or attack this guy, go for dragon, do an objective quickly and decisively. And it's really important that everybody stays on the same page during those times. And nobody goes off by themselves because if you do that, you put your team in a disadvantage if the other team shows up with all their people.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
I just want to add that League of Legends is a game that requires a lot of flexibility because you have to learn how to play in different ways. Otherwise, if you only know how to play one way and you face an enemy team over several games, they can easily adapt to how you play and abuse that, causing you to like do really bad and thus losing for your team. Yeah, so in the game, there's a hundred forty different characters that you can play. And each character has a set of different abilities, which consists of four abilities. So you always have to know how to counter your enemy because they can choose one hun, one of a hundred forty. And then you'd have to learn off of that.
So everyone on the enemy team can choose out of a hundred forty champions. And if you don't know each of the four abilities on their champion, and a lot of times it comes with a passive as well, because each champion has a unique passive that's not a button press, but exists in the game and assists their champion. If you can't understand all of them and their advantages and their weaknesses, it's very difficult, and you basically play from a disadvantage.
I think they just explained how they won. It's outstanding. You just blew me all away. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Fritz.
A question. What part in the season do you find out the game that you're going to have? Is it one game for the whole season? How does that work? Because you must have to practice with this particular game.
Yeah, so when the season started, it was in the beginning of the regular season. We had three to four weeks, I believe. Each week, we put against two different teams. One at four PM, one at six PM. We would have to stay at school. We would know roughly a week beforehand or a couple of days beforehand which team we're against. So that's when Jack Doyle, who's our in-game scouter, he would check out all the team's players and check all their statistics and how they play and stuff like that.
Google everyone.
Yeah, and then we play against them.
How many hours a week do you think you practice? Because it's a lot of.
I don't think, I think it would concern parents.
That's what I was. Just give it hours.
Oh, you have a trophy there, so obviously it's not a problem.
But I would expect it's, you have to put a significant amount of time.
It's definitely greater than the number that people in sports like basketball, football, like have to practice with them.
Thank you.
Well, you have the opportunity to practice more than them. It's not necessarily a necessary requirement, and a lot of times it's more efficient to do so in a scrim environment and playing with your team because then you establish communication and synergy along with individual practice. But because it's not a physical exercise as much as basketball practice or football practice or soccer practice would be, you have the ability to go for longer and develop more in less time because you don't have necessarily required rest and recuperation from physical sports. So that can be an advantage, but it can also be.
Mr. Weskey.
I had a question about prep time as well, because I can imagine there's a lot that goes into it. And so did you scout Newton South like in advance? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
That was where our original three bans came from. Were against their specific strategies, were from what we have learned online about their specific players, what they've played in previous games, and all the data to figure out what they could possibly throw at us and be ready for it.
And is that, you don't have to say the number of hours, but is that like an every-day-after-school thing leading up to the tournament?
Actually, the way they lay it out is not as complicated as it sounds because, like we said originally, there's a hundred and forty champions. For the most part, you don't get much of their stats in a meaningful way other than basically what champion they played, or did they win or lose, how well they did. So most of it is tying that to a champion, figuring out what their best ones are, and being prepared for those.
Yeah, most people like to specialize in around one to three people. So when we look it up, like it only takes like ten minutes to figure out their whole roster, what they're good at, and find out like ten to fifteen champions they're good at, and figure out the most problematic to be for what plan we want to execute and ban accordingly.
And then for the amount of hours spent a day, to give like a small estimation, I think most players spend at least three hours a day playing.
That would be a total.
I mean, I'm, I'm much greater than that, but for some, the minimum is three players. And about the scouting, even though our other three teams were eliminated during playoffs, they were also a very big help to us because they also previously played against teams like Newton South. So it's even better than just like on-paper statistics because they could tell us how they actually played and what we could do to counter it like specifically.
Specifically because we were in the computer room we showed earlier on the screen when we were both playing the semifinals, because that was not at a LAN event. It was at, from online at your school. We finished our games quickly, and me and both Jerry were able to watch the remainder of the last game fully for Newton South, where N P G played them in the semifinals. We were able to basically scout them live in a game for its entire duration. And that was really helpful to seeing what their biggest strategies were. Specifically, one of the champions that we saw was Rengar, and that's not gonna give much information unless you know the game. But it was specific to my opposite number, and it was his best champion and strategy. And we banned it for the first two games, but were forced to drop it in favor of a different ban in the last game. And thus, we had to face their biggest strength in the last game, but we deemed it as less effective than what they had played before. And it was these give-and-take scenarios that you were forced into in which you're forced to agree upon a decision and be able to work through that decision.
And you might have mentioned this as one other question. Shrewsbury is the first esports high school champion in Massachusetts, right? Was there, were there previous?
No.
No, it's the first one.
Right, so we have another, excuse me, we have another fall, spring season starting. The deadline's been extended a little bit to see what we're gonna determine if we're gonna play. There's actually offering three games. League of Legends is one of the most popular games in the world. So I think they chose a game that had multiple, that relied on teamwork, collaboration, flexible thinking. The scouting piece and the preparation, clearly they, we did all that. But there's three other games I think we're trying, we did a survey. We're gonna try and focus on one of the two this, this spring and do another, maybe do spring season with just one game. You also have to understand that they just don't play video games. They're, they're very involved in our school commi, community. They've done other things besides play video games and come to Shrewsbury High School. They didn't, they don't give themselves enough credit for what they've done, but they're in other co-curricular programming than just this. So they're fantastic young men, and they've been, it was a great, it was a great experience for all of us. And as a principal, I, and the administrative team at the high school was really trying to figure out a way that we can try and engage all students. We knew this is a big piece, that students are playing this outside of school. We figured, how can we bring something into, you know, provide more opportunity for students at the high school? And this seemed like a great fit for us for the fall.
Colleagues, anything further?
Just a quick question. Is there, I'm completely uninitiated to this whole thing, needless to say. Are there any online videos or anything where we could kind of see one of these games and get a sense as to?
The whole match is actually archived, everything on the internet's archived. Whatever you post, as you know, we tell our students, whatever you post on the internet, you can find. You could find it through Twitch, T W I T C H, which is the online. You could find it through Twitch, T W I T C H, which is the online provider or the online streaming. Um, and you just have to Google the Massachusetts Esports Championship. The matches, it'll show you about four hours. There's actually, there was three men from Twitch who are no- no- unknown to me and probably all of you that are popular within the esports circle, actually at the event commentating on the players live. So they're streaming their live. It's like, it was like you'd see the Super Bowl with um, Tony Romo and Jim Nance. There's two twenty-somethings, maybe thirty-somethings, young thirty, late twenties, thirty-somethings commenting the entire strategy of the game. Believe me, I didn't understand how, what they were saying. But uh, watching the score and how it happened and Mr. McKinstry pointing out the things that are happening to me and uh, Mr. Nevada and Mr. Lozot was helpful. So we could cheer him on. But it was, it was a great venue. The M S A A did a great job of securing a great venue. Um, it was a little bit cumbersome for us to get down there, but um, we certainly can do that. I'm not sure if, I think it's a whole, the whole game streamed, but I don't think they have the highlights because I looked for the highlights.
Yeah, it was the entire VOD of the game.
Do we have any idea how many viewers there were?
Roughly a hundred?
We could check throughout and it was, it was floating around eighty for the majority of the matches. And there were probably different people on and off, so probably about a hundred.
Colleges and universities are actually moving toward esports teams. If you, this is another trend that's happening at post-secondary education where they're actually offering scholarships and recruiting students in esports. Um, so recruiters were and have contacted people based upon their rank, based upon their skill level. Uh, an interest to potentially try and woo students to come to their school, so.
Yeah, so I know that the um, president slash coach of the UMass Amherst League of Legends team was also watching the stream. For Jerry and I, since we're the two seniors that may potentially go to UMass Amherst. New world for me.
One last question. Is this primarily a, a activity that appeals to young men or are there young women who participate as well?
Actually, one of the, sorry, one of the players on our team, uh, her name's Verisera. She was in the picture, I bel- in the last picture. She's on the left next to Coach McKinstry. She was one of our primary players that helped us. And she was actu- actually a very important player who helped us win the state championship. But typically, there's more uh, men that play this game, more males. But there also are females that also play video games.
Colleagues, further questions or comments? Dr. Sawyer, anything you wanted to add?
Just want to thank you. It's uh, been an education for me as well. And uh, it's from time to time, you see something in the news or somewhere in the media about the popularity of esports and video gaming. And, and uh, or this Twitch Network and things that, and, and the, I always have to do a double take on the numbers. Number of people who are involved, the amount of money that's involved. Um, this is an entire industry. I know we've seen, you know, some local colleges and universities as well as those nationally who are starting to create uh, majors in gaming, uh, you know, there's, I know when I talk to students at the high school, sometimes what they're interested in doing is video game design. Um, in terms of their uh, uh, future potential uh, profession. Uh, and I guess I'd be curious, is there, in, in terms of what you might know you're thinking about for next year or, or the future when you, when you head off beyond Shrewsbury High School? Uh, any thoughts in terms of what field of study or anything that this might be? Is there something about this experience that's pointing you in a certain direction of what you might want to do uh, beyond, in, in addition to potentially professional League of Legends gameplay?
Well, I can say that three of the four people here, me, Jerry and Jerry are on the robotics team at Shrewsbury. And all of us probably are going towards some form of computer related or engineering related fields likely. And because of the nature of those fields and how they're tied into progressive technology. It, we're inherently close to the growth of online gaming. Because it's the community we have a lot of interest in. And have a lot of connections with. And a lot of our friends and peers also do it as well. It's a very easy and efficient way to play and have fun with your friends without physically having to ride to their house or going somewhere. So it's a lot more accessible in that way. But in terms of whether this will influence my career choices specifically, probably not necessarily influencing my career choices. But that is no takeaway from the idea of it because it was incredibly fun and I will return to it if it is still ongoing in our school this next season. So directly it didn't lead me to a different career. But it helped me along a new experience and new path. And gave me opportunities to go to Gillette, play with a team, learn communication skills with friends and peers. And that's remarkable to be able to get something like that from such a looked down upon in many ways group.
Well, I, I would suggest that, you know, when we think about some of the work we're trying to do and robotics team is another great example of these kinds of things that we're trying to create. Regardless of what specific field of study or profession students end up going into. Um, when we talk about the four Cs of twenty-first century learning, whether that's critical thinking, collaboration, communication, even creativity. Um, this hits them all in, in some way. And I would imagine if you end up going into an engineering field or a computer field, um, the kinds of things that you did to make this, these are all team-based professions. Uh, to some degree. Um, so it, it seems to me that these experiences are going to be very valuable regardless of what you do going forward. So congratulations again. Uh, we're very proud of the work you've done. And uh, it's uh, historic in that the first ever uh, state champions in esports are coming from Shrewsbury High School. Um, so with that, if you gentlemen would like to come up and shake the committee's hand, and we've got a certificate for you, and again, congratulations.
Excellent. The next item on our agenda this evening is under policy. It is a discussion of the school year proposed calendar for the two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty season. This is a first reading. Dr. Sawyer will summarize the proposed calendar, which is enclosed committee members in our meeting materials. And answer any questions the committee may have. The draft calendar will then be posted for public comment in advance of an anticipated vote at our next meeting on February twenty seventh. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you. Uh, you may recall that a few years ago, we reconvene a calendar committee of uh, parents and staff members. Um, the, the calendar since then has reflected the recommendations of that committee in a variety of ways. And this uh, calendar uh, continues to do that. It's very similar um, to the calendar we've had the last few years. Um, has been, has been the case going on at least two decades, uh, and since I've been here in, in Shrewsbury. Uh, the intent is to begin the school year, um, the week prior to Labor Day, uh, the last week of August. Uh, with that Monday uh, being the first day for staff, that Tuesday being a, a school day for students, first day. Um, that would be the three days, that Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, uh, for students to be in session. Uh, then the Friday prior to Labor Day would be a non-school day for students, uh, but would be a professional development day uh, for staff. That's been a, uh, seemed to have worked with a good timing for initiatives that we want to make sure we're rolling out at the first part of the school year. Um, gives a four-day weekend after the intensive opening for students. And then we resume with a nice stretch, long stretch of time up until Columbus Day weekend, which we also have another Friday professional development day. Um, and that was the feedback from parents to that committee was tying full professional development days to weekends, uh, with long weekends whenever possible. Um, beyond that, the, the one change from the current year, although this is something, we did something similar uh, back in uh, two years ago. Um, traditionally, uh, we've held the uh, parent conference day for grades pre-K through eight uh, on election day in November. Uh, for two reasons. Timing wise, it's a good ti- uh, point in the year to have those conferences. Uh, but also because Coolidge School and Spring Street School are still uh, voting locations. Uh, and, and the November elections when they're held are, are quite large. Uh, that helps us with managing that situation. Uh, however, there's no uh, election in November this year. Uh, Veterans Day uh, actually falls on Monday. Um, and after some conversation with the administrative team, we've also run this by our, our district faculty advisory council. Also as uh, uh, the leadership of the teachers association and the paraprofessional association. Uh, the recommendation that I have at this point is to uh, have that one week later than typical uh, and connect it with Veterans Day. So it'd be on Tuesday, November twelfth. Um, there, there were some questions a couple of years ago, whether or not we might have a lot of families traveling during that time and not have as many people come in for conferences. But it really wasn't the case. Um, and we, we anticipate that will be a, a, a good connection again. Uh, at the high school, that's actually a professional development day, so there are no conferences. So parents will only have high school students, um, they can utilize that time or students can, that's a time of year. Sometimes uh, seniors may be traveling to look at colleges. Um, so we thought that was good to connect it to the existing holiday. Uh, beyond that, uh, the, the, as we continue through the year, uh, we have a series of Tuesdays, which is our traditional staff meeting day. Uh, that will be early release days, um, so we can capture, uh, connect uh, longer blocks of three-hour periods of time for staff professional development. Uh, the traditional three-day November vacation, uh, the December vacation, uh, because of uh, travel and the way it falls. So the idea would be to actually begin that at the end of the day on December twentieth. Uh, the week of uh, Monday, December twenty-third uh, would be off and then students would return, as is traditionally on the second of January after that break. Uh, the day after New Year's Day. And then beyond that, it's the traditional uh, typical uh, state federal holidays. And uh, uh, the February vacation, the week of President's Day and the April vacation, the week of Patriots' Day. Uh, with uh, uh, the continued folk, uh, the continued uh, tradition of having high school graduation. Um, the week of Memorial Day, uh, with all the senior events that week. Um, so uh, and you know, one of the benefits, uh, this has been going on well over probably twelve, close to fifteen years now. Uh, by starting before uh, Labor Day. Um, and by not having some of the uh, holidays that some other districts choose to take relative to uh, uh, faith holidays. Depending on the population in different communities, whether those are the Jewish holidays or whether that's uh, Good Friday in the Christian faith. Um, or uh, some of the conversations we had with the uh, committee a few years ago was about whether or not other holidays like uh, Diwali or Eid uh, for the Hindu and the Muslim faith respectively. Uh, and that was something actually the calendar committee that convened about fifteen years ago or so, uh, had taken up as the community became more diverse. Uh, to look at as more and more holidays came into it, handling those by being sensitive and respectful of families whose students won't be attending those days. Uh, but not having no school days that would extend the year uh, deeper into June. Under this calendar, the last day, barring any snow days, uh, would be Friday, June twelfth, uh, which gives us uh, pretty much a full week potential for five snow days. Before we get into our traditional summer institute of professional development, uh, the last full week in June. Um, so that's an overall summary of the proposed calendar. I would be happy to answer any questions the committee has at this point. And as Mr. Palich mentioned, we will post it on our website. Um, and any feedback that the community uh, wishes to give, uh, we'll certainly forward that. And they can send it directly to you at your email address or through me. Um, and we would ask for a vote for approval, um, at your next meeting on February twenty seventh.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Colleagues, questions or comments? Seeing none, we will, as Dr. Sawyer and I have mentioned, this will be posted online and we certainly invite, excuse me, we certainly invite members of the public to offer their feedback prior to our next meeting. The next item on our agenda is also under policy. It is in regard to the enrollment of non-resident students policy that was revised actually at a previous business meeting. This is a, a housekeeping matter to clean up some language in the policy that we revised again just at our previous meeting. Uh, this, the second reading of a draft of a revised policy six-two-one, which is the enrollment of non-resident pupils. Was held at the meeting on January twenty-third and the committee voted to approve the draft with the stipulation that the phrase parent or guardian was to be used in place of family or guardian simply for the purposes of being consistent in the language that we used. Uh, I later determined with the assistance of our clerk, Ms. McCollum, that the motion that I made did not do quite what we had intended. So I asked that it come back before the committee tonight so that we can correct that oversight. There is a slightly revised version of that policy in committee members' materials. Uh, that makes the requested changes so that the phrase parent or guardian or the plural thereof is as appropriate. Is used in place of the terms family, families, parent or parents. Again, just to ensure consistency of language. Uh, and again, an updated draft that incorporates those changes is reflected in our materials. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the updated policy six-two-one, enrollment of non-resident pupils as presented in our materials. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. The opposed, the motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the, a discussion of the fiscal two thousand twenty budget. The superintendent's recommendation. Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Collins will present the superintendent's initial recommendation for the F Y two thousand twenty school department budget.
I'm gonna ask my other, I'm gonna share colleagues to join us as well.
Excellent. So Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Collins, Ms. Malone, Ms. Clouder, Ms. Belcito, welcome.
So good evening. Uh, and for those watching at home to my left, uh, Mr. Patrick Collins is our assistant superintendent for finance and operations. And to my right, Meg Belcito is assistant superintendent for student services, uh, which includes special education and people personnel services. Uh, Amy Clouder, uh, who is our assistant superintendent uh, for curriculum instruction and se- and assessment. Um, and Ms. Barb Malone, who is our director of human resources. Um, the five of us are essentially the district-level administrative team uh, for the district. Um, certainly want to, before we begin, uh, thank them for their many efforts uh, on this uh, work to present this budget to you this evening. Um, as well as uh, the team of, of principals, other district leaders, assistant principals and department directors. Uh, and also particularly uh, Kim Fitzpatrick, uh, who is uh, Mr. Collins' primary uh, support in, in the business office. And she was uh, very much responsible for the uh, the yellow budget book that are part of your materials. This year, uh, you know, just in the presentation, uh, we will uh, cover a number of major topics. Uh, and they're just listed here, just to orient you, we're gonna talk a little bit about how we're changing our process this year. Um, as well as talking about what we have for a status quo budget, where some of these funds come from. Uh, we're gonna talk some of what our finances look like and, and enrollment, uh, state aid. Uh, what we look at is some indicators of, of being cost-effective, uh, and providing value to the community. Um, and then we're gonna uh, take a break at that point after we've talked about our status quo budget to give you an opportunity to ask any questions you have of that. Um, and then we'll shift gears into, and there's a little bit of the difference this year. Um, talking about what our community's expectations are, have clearly, that have been laid out over the past couple of years. Um, and, and how uh, we might uh, meet those as we go through the rest of the budget season. Uh, looking at a variety of uh, recommendations for strategic investments to meet the expectations the community has of us. Um, so that's what we'll take you through this evening and we'll look forward to your questions and comments. In terms of the process itself, uh, this is uh, partially in response to the fact that, uh, those who have been paying attention to the uh, board of selectmen and the town manager, Mr. Mizikar, the town manager, in his second year, uh, has shifted the way that, uh, he is doing some of the budgeting work. Um, for the municipal budget and the overall town budget, of course, which includes the school department. Uh, and uh, we felt it was a good time for us to maybe shift gears a bit as well, um, to match a little bit of how he's approaching things. Uh, one of those is that, uh, the initial uh, recommendation he's making, we, we believe uh, will be very close to probably what the eventual amount of, of funding, uh, that the town will be able to move towards, uh, the school department or invest in the school department. Uh, and uh, at the same time, because of the way we've been working with these, the strategic plan that was put into place a year ago by the school committee, uh, for the school department, uh, trying to separate out instead of putting everything together in one ask. Uh, looking at, you know, what we have that exists, what it takes to move that forward. Um, and then looking at these four categories and what it is that we think, uh, would, would be wise investments for the community to make in its schools. Um, in order to achieve the kinds of, of goals and uh, that, that are, that have been laid out and expected of us over the next five years. So with that, uh, we're going to talk a little bit about, especially for those who might be watching for the first time. Uh, how school finance in Massachusetts works for public schools. Uh, Mr. Collins will take you to some of that, uh, and then we'll talk a little bit about what the status quo budget uh, looks like uh, for our school district for next year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Sawyer. So first, um, as was mentioned earlier, uh, there are a variety of uh, funding sources that go into uh, supporting public education uh, in our community. And so tried to lay it out in some form of uh, educational speak or A B Cs. And so first, um, the, the major source of our funding uh, on an annual basis is uh, the so-called general fund or local appropriation. That's the budget that we take to the annual town meeting and uh, ask for uh, their approval. Um, that in fact, uh, uh, there's two underlying sources there for that general fund appropriation. And that's money that's provided by um, taxation or other uh, revenue sources that are generated by our community. by our community, and then also outside chap, so-called Chapter 70 state education aid. And it's really those two components that form our general fund, local appropriation. I'm going to unpack that a little bit more in some upcoming slides. But in addition to that funding source, we also receive another form of state aid called special education circuit breaker money, and this came into play probably about 10 years or so ago, and that is a funding source to assist communities who have students who are receiving special education services at a very high cost, and to provide some sort of relief. And so the concept is, is that when they reach a certain threshold of cost, the so-called circuit breaker switch flips, and then every dollar after that threshold, there's some reimbursement from the state, you know, somewhere between 65% to 75% of those dollars beyond that threshold. That threshold, they, you know, they set at so-called four times the foundation budget, or it's kind of like an average cost per pupil, so, you know, it's about $45,000. So, that first $45,000 the community owns, and then every dollar thereafter, there is some reimbursement in. So, anyway, there's lots of tracking and record-keeping that's required to be done by the Special Education Office. It's a very time-consuming process, and an annual claim that has to be submitted at the end of each school year. It's a reimbursement for the prior-year cost, so it's not, you know, forward-looking, it's backward-looking. So there's a lot of different aspects to that, but all in all, it's, you know, and you'll see in the budget documents, that that can range anywhere between 2.7 to 3.4 million dollars. So it's another important revenue source for our operations. Federal and state grants, these are typically, federal grants are received by almost every community in Massachusetts and throughout the country, and depending on your student demographics. We receive, you know, between 1.8 and 2 million dollars of federal aid, again, primarily for special education, but also for low-income, based upon your low-income student ratio, and that's for targeted reading and math services. And then state grants, we receive, actually in the last few years, zero dollars. So there's not a lot of state grant money to be had in our equation. That's in Shrewsbury. In terms of fee revenue, you know, we are, I would say relatively, in comparison to other communities, a so-called high-fee district. We have lots of fees, you know, busing, student activities, athletics, music lessons, after-school care, so that generates an important revenue source for us, simply to offset costs for those specific programs. And of course, those came into play in difficult budget times, and it was done reluctantly by, you know, school committees in the past, in order to maintain all of those very important co-curricular programs. Then there's private gifts and grants. You know, we run the annual Colonial Fund each year. We've had the Rhodes Scholars Race in the past, and then more recently, we had a capital campaign to fund the turf project. That raised over $2 million to install that turf field up at Shrewsbury High School through individual donations and corporate sponsorship. And then finally, F, student activity funds, and this is typically what parents are used to paying for field trips, or dances, or things like that, to fund admission prices and transportation to those events. So there's a lot of different funding sources that go into supporting our operation. This is just a chart that shows kind of the relativity of all those different types of funds, and the blue shaded area is that town local appropriation, and you can see there the other smaller funding sources. The blue part, of course, has the biggest rise of all of them, and the other funding sources have remained relatively flat over this time period, fiscal '14 to fiscal '20. That blue shaded area, the town appropriation back in fiscal '14, was $52 million. The proposal that you have for fiscal '20 is $67 million, so it's a $15 million increase in that particular funding source, while other areas have remained relatively flat. So if you were to take that blue portion that I just showed you there, and subdivide that now into two pieces, that local contribution that I spoke about earlier, and then the state aid, you can see, again, the distribution over the same time period, and the blue shaded area being Chapter 70 state aid. And for that time period, it's increased by 1.1 million, and the local contribution over that same time period, 13.9 million. So just going back here, the blue shaded area, like I said, went up 15 million, and that's the distribution. It's basically, you know, local revenues, property tax revenue, meals tax, motor vehicle excise tax, other types of fees and taxes. So you can see where that, you know, state aid, of course, we look a lot at state aid and what the governor's budget is going to be, and what the state legislature is going to do, but in fact, you know, the, we need to look at ourselves really primarily, because that's where the funding, new funding is going to come into the future. Also, another aspect that I wanted to just bring out is that beyond the school budget that we bring to town meeting, each of the other departments, of course, bring their own budgets, whether it's the police department, public buildings, town treasurer's budget, they all have pieces of their budget that, in fact, support school operations, like health and life insurance for our active employees and our retirees. That comes under the town treasurer's budget. Retirement costs for school retirees who are part of the town retirement system, school resource officers from the police department, building operations costs, heating, lighting, custodial services comes out of the public buildings department. But at the end of each year, we get either from our accounting system, or from those departments individually, the costs that were incurred in support of school operations. We're required to collect all this information, report it to the state, all of those things get factored into the average cost per pupil, but you can see here from this bar chart that, you know, those dollars from other budgets can range anywhere between 22 million to 25 million on an annual basis.
So with that, the status quo budget that is being presented to the school committee for consideration is for town appropriation of just over 67 million. That represents a 2.9 million increase over the current fiscal year. That represents a 4.59, almost 4.6% increase. You see on the bullets on this slide that the actual increases we've had over the last four years range from 2.2% back in FY '16, 2.83% last year, the low 3% in the two years in between, for an average of 2.9% over those four years. Now, those are the four years after we had a very significant increase of close to 10% the year that the operational override came into effect. And I think, and you'll see later in the presentation, we talk about, you know, the initial request that came from the school department versus what was actually funded, which is represented by these percentage increases, really shows it's been some pent-up demand in terms of what we're trying to accomplish, and what we feel we need to accomplish, what we've been able to do. And certainly, we've been in a much healthier place since the override, but the piece that we have to be considerate of as a community is that if we're not able to meet that demand in an environment where we're still growing as far as our enrollment, that that's going to lead to the kinds of consequences that we want, certainly want to avoid in terms of affecting the quality of education. So that is the, is the, what the request is for a status quo budget. The next slide shows really kind of, in a very broad sense, the four categories of what the percentage changes that make that up. So of that, essentially 4.6% increase, salaries and wages is by far the largest part of our budget, and for a status quo, is to bring our existing staff forward to next year. We see, that's estimated at 3.6%, which is a very reasonable number in terms of this kind of public education sector. Transportation services are up significantly. That's a combination of the fact that we have a new contract with a transportation that began this year. You may recall that when they were the sole bidder, they, we were able to actually negotiate with them to limit the impact of year one and spread it across the first two years, the most significant increases. We also need to add a couple of buses, which is really a reflection of the fact that we continue to grow. Some of that's for special education transportation, and some of that's for general transportation in terms of meeting our students' needs. It's a very, very efficient program already, and we don't see a way forward to absorb the additional enrollment we've continued to have without putting some additional vehicles on the road, which obviously adds to that budget. Out-of-district tuitions for special education, and just by way of preview, at your next meeting, Ms. Belcito will do a more detailed presentation around special education budget, but this is, as you know, the most volatile in terms of costs, year-over-year, depending on student needs, and these can be very high-class placements of students in specialized schools out of district. When they're necessary, they're, it's what we're obligated and should be doing when it's the right thing to do, but they obviously have an impact on the budget. And then the circuit breaker Mr. Collins referred to unfortunately can be unpredictable from year to year how much the state funds it, so that's one of the areas we have to monitor the most, most closely over the next few months. And then finally, materials, supplies, et cetera, contracted services, that's actually, and the status quo budget goes down about 1%. Some of that's because our leasing program for our iPad program, our one-to-one technology program, hit a peak in the current fiscal year, and is actually starting to come down to where it'll get to an equilibrium after that initial very big lease when we went to the high school all at once is phasing out. So that's, those are the different drivers. The next, the next slide actually shows what I just discussed, and you can see there some more details about why those different percentages are increasing, the way that they, the way that they are displayed in that previous table. The next pie chart, you can see very dramatically that by far the greatest expense, and it's no exception to any school department, is salaries. We're a human resources business, and then the various other slices of the pie, everything from transportation, special ed transportation, tuitions that we just mentioned, tuition to vocational technical high school at Asabet, that's about 3% of our budget, and then you can see that, again, the salary is by far the largest part. And as I referenced earlier, enrollment continues to be a driver as well. The next slide, you can see that we're hit, we hit this past year a high of 6,258 students. You can see that just since 2015, that's a 3.5% increase, and our budgetary resources have not been growing commensurately with the number of, some of those we can absorb through economy of scale, but we're seeing pressures in different places, particularly in enrollment at the high school, that we have to be able to deal with, and that's actually shown by this next slide, where you can see that since 2002, when the high school opened, this is, we've increased by 739 students, which is larger than many high schools in central Massachusetts itself, just that increase, it's a 65% increase in students. We are packed to the gills there. The high school administration is doing lots to mitigate the effects of that, and it's still a terrific experience for kids, but it does have implications in terms of what we can provide, and we're maximizing room space, and what we might be able to do to be even more flexible with our schedule requires resources in the form of staff, particularly, and you'll see a request for this later on, not having to share staff with the middle school level, so that they can do things with their schedule that aren't dependent on another school's schedule at the same time. Another area we're experiencing higher enrollment over time is in English language learners. You can see that trend is up significantly over the last many years. Went down a bit this past year, and year-over-year, that can be an unpredictable population of students, but it does require mandated staffing resources in order to provide what the state legally requires us to do for the education of students who need to learn English when they arrive here. So that's something that is taken into consideration as well. And Mr. Collins will speak briefly to the next piece, which is around class size, which of course has always been a priority of the school committee.
So this is, again, is a driver for our budget planning for the upcoming school years, to take a look at enrollment projections. You've seen enrollment projection report already, you know, we look at two different sources of projections, and basically then we calibrate, or look at both of those, and forecast on a school-by-school, grade-by-grade basis, what our expected class sizes are. You know, the, the more difficult part of this frankly is the grade one, because not all of our grade one students are in our district right now. As kindergartners, we get a large number, we get a big bump, about a 15% increase in that kindergarten cohort going to grade one, and so it's really trying to determine, you know, what school elementary zones that they're in. So, and then we'll want to make sure that we have class sizes that are in or close to school committee guidelines, and if you look at this distribution here, we look to be in very good shape and not having to add any new teaching positions at the elementary level, and also, we're looking at, of 347 projected kindergarten students, 243 of them would be in a full-day kindergarten program, so that's a pretty good number of there, although we'd like to have all the students in full-day kindergarten, certainly will when the Beal Project comes online. So that's the elementary level. At the secondary level, again, it's the same process. We're able to get, excuse me, a little bit better, more accurate projections, because all the students in these grade levels are in our district already. Again, the guidance is 22 to 24. We're looking at averages right now at grade five and six of 25, just slightly over, and grade eight at 26, again, a little bit over there, and 24 is at grade seven.
And of course, we're maxed out for space at the middle schools as well, so we wouldn't really have the option to add a few more teachers into, because we don't have the rooms to put them in, but fortunately, we're staying pretty steady with just a slight, slightly over the class size guidelines that we have from the school committee.
So at this point, we're going to shift away from enrollment and talk about the topic of state aid a little bit more, and this first slide shows reflection of the governor's budget, which was published in late January, and it shows that inclusive, included in his budget is $20 per student, an additional state aid for fiscal '20, the upcoming fiscal year, school year 2019, 2020, with enrollment of just over 6,000 students, so it'd be $120,860 more right now. That is also factored into the town manager's revenue projection, overall revenue projection for both state aid and local resources. We are so-called minimum aid community, meaning that the only new state aid that we're going to get is these additional dollars on a per capita basis, even though that there's been some pretty significant changes around the formula for devising state aid and the so-called Foundation Budget Review Commission, lots of changes in the foundation budget and how state aid should be calculated. All of those changes, or many of those changes are implicit in the fiscal '20 state budget, but because of our position in terms of our relative wealth of the community and how much state aid we're already receiving, we're going to continue to get so-called minimum aid going forward. So right now, it's $20 per student. In terms of what that means of our overall fiscal '20 budget proposal, this kind of breaks it out into three different components. The blue shaded area is so-called local contribution. So this is our 67 million budget broken into kind of three pieces. Local contribution, $47 million, or 70%. The current amount of state aid that we're getting in fiscal '19 is base aid. That's the floor. It's always kind of this hold harmless situation where you never get less state aid in the succeeding year than you have in the current year. That's been a covenant that's been in place since education reform began. And so our base aid is just over 19.8 million, and then the new aid is 120,860. So we've got this 70/30 split between local contribution and state aid that we're looking at for fiscal '20, and you can see how much the new minimum aid plays a very small role And you can see how much the new minimum aid plays a very small role in funding our upcoming year budget. It's .2%, so that's one-fifth of 1% for the upcoming year. Shifting gears again into a little bit more of some benchmarking, you know, how do we do in terms of spending in comparison to some of our peer school districts where the state as a whole? You've seen these stats before, this is our per pupil expenditure. Over time, again, these statistics are developed and published by the Department of Education and they're on their website, publicly available for everybody to look at. And also again, factor all of those costs that school districts incur, not only through their local appropriation, but also support that they get from other municipal, town or city departments. So you can see in fiscal '15, that rise there, the year of the override, our average cost per pupil went from $11,870 up to just over $13,000, but since that time it's just plateaued and remained flat. So right now we're at $13,335 and that's for fiscal '17, that's the latest data that they have available. That $13,000 per student puts us in the bottom 10% of cost per pupil of all the districts in the Commonwealth. How is that compared to some other peer groupings? This first one here is a group that the Department of Ed puts together based upon the district size, the grade spans that they offer, and then also their special student populations, like percentage of special needs students, low-income students, and they kind of factor in like districts based upon those three criteria. And then from this grouping, you can see that we're third from the bottom. Melrose is the lowest at just over 12,000. In Burlington, another light community based upon this criteria, is over $20,000 per pupil for fiscal '17. Another way to look at it, you heard the presentation from the gentleman from ClearGov. They do aggregate lots of state data and put it together in some pretty nifty-looking charts and graphs. And they also look at communities from purely socio-economic standpoint. And our peer group based upon their analysis is this grouping here, North Attleboro, Belmont, Franklin, Arlington, Chelmsford, and Natick. And we are second from the bottom in terms of that grouping from ClearGov. It's also important to note that when we did the per pupil expenditure report, this is talking about costs, but we also made mention of the fact that Shrewsbury now is in the top 20th percentile for income per capita. So we are a comparatively wealthy community and so it's very much a fair comparison to compare us to Belmont and Arlington and communities like that in Natick. This one here, basically, it kind of looks busy, but what we're trying to show here is two different data points and that is, so at the end of the day, what's my average tax bill? And what is the tax rate? And so the tax rate is the red line there, and you can, this is from fiscal '18, and you can see Shrewsbury in the yellow bar here. We have, and these are surrounding communities geographically in Worcester County and the like. And you can see that we're at the lowest tax rate, $12.66 per thousand of valuation. And we are third from the bottom in terms of average tax bill, which for this year was $5,560. And you get a high, just over $10,000 and a low of Milbury, which is about $4,400. And then finally, we have in the past often got this question about, you know, what do you do to, besides go to town meeting and ask for, you know, the appropriation, what else do you do as a school department to try to generate other revenue sources? And some of these things I mentioned earlier at the very beginning, which is, you know, how we fund the operation. And so obviously we get significant revenues for fees. We've maximized a lot of different opportunities to generate revenue. We have sought numerous private grants and sponsorships and hope to have some good news on that front going forward. We've got some pieces in the pipeline about some other grants. And then a couple of years ago, the school committee voted to open up school choice on a very limited targeted basis to create a recurring revenue stream. And so we have 25 students now still persisting from that original 30 that the school committee authorized. And so that generates $5,000 per student or $125,000 in revenue. So we plan for that revenue coming in and we use that to offset teacher salaries. So all of these costs that you see, the $67 million that we bring to town meeting, that's net after we already have factored in this school choice and other types of revenues. All right.
So in leading up to the opportunity to ask us about this status quo budget, and then we'll talk about these strategic investments, we included this slide, this was the campaign that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education put together over the past year because they had data that showed that a lot of Massachusetts residents didn't realize that we have essentially the strongest public schools in the nation on a whole variety of measures. And truly of course, performing in the upper echelon around one of Massachusetts districts, we can say in a very reasonable way that we're among one of the highest performing school districts in the nation. It's something we're particularly proud of. At the same time, we have work to do, as I talked about in my State of the District report. And I think it was summarized well actually by Commissioner Jeffrey Riley, the new commissioner of the department, when he was referring to the Leading the Nation piece and, you know, we're leading the nation under a paradigm that people are calling into question more and more in terms of whether it's really serving the needs of our children and young people as well as it needs to, given what their future holds. And the analogy he drew, which I thought was apropos, was that it may be that our Leading the Nation statistics are much like being Blockbuster Video in 1988. On top of the world and first leading the field, but if someone had a bit of a crystal ball about to get wiped off the face of the earth because things are going to change pretty dramatically. And his question to us was, this was the assembled superintendents at our winter meeting, how do we become Netflix? And I think that's what you'll hear a lot about when we talk in a few moments after you've had an opportunity to ask questions about this portion around our strategic investments. So with that, we'll break and if there are questions or comments you'd like to make about the status quo budget and the materials that Mr. Collins and I presented, and then once we've done that, we'll be able to move forward and talk about the rest of this calendar and then what these strategic investments will be making.
Colleagues, questions or comments at this time? I think we might just be ready to move on.
Okay. So we are here, I know you can't read this because it's small, but it's just an idea, if you look where the arrow is, we're about a third of the way through the budget process. We're presenting this this evening. We'll then be going through some very specific presentations about areas of the budget over our next several school committee meetings, meeting with the finance committee and doing the work as we head towards town meeting and approval of the budget in May. But what this is really about is, you know, how do we focus on meeting the expectations of our community? We know that there's an expectation we prepare students for college and career in an environment that's rapidly changing. How do we respond to different societal dilemmas? We know that we have an increase in mental health issues among young people. We know that we have a landscape that's changing because of the legalization of marijuana. We know we have an opioid epidemic and there's expectations that our schools are going to be educating our kids around these issues. Not to mention vaping has now become, come to the forefront of a public health issue. How do we provide challenging academics to a very wide range of students, which of course is part and parcel of being a public education organization? And how do we provide a wider array of co-curricular programs, much like the new one you saw earlier this evening in terms of the esports, to make sure kids have an opportunity to excel in something that they're interested in and passionate about? So we did bring to the committee and through a very detailed process, you adopted the Portrait of a Shrewsbury Graduate. There are six major areas that are illustrated in the visual there that talk about what we're trying to provide to kids. And notice that none of them say get higher test scores. That may be one measure of some elements of that, maybe critical thinking or content mastery, but we know innovation, resilience and focus. How do you become a good citizen, how do you engage with your community? How do you collaborate and communicate? How is it that you can be a leader by influencing others, not necessarily in a formal position, but how do you influence the improvement of others or a team, which is such a critical skill? So that vision was laid out. Then we created a set of strategic priorities to say, well, for the next five years, what are the most important areas for us to focus on and focus our efforts and our energy and our resources on in order to move those forward? And we'll talk about those. But I know that in the budget presentation or in my budget message, there was a quote from Herakles, the Greek philosopher, that I have to admit, Mr. Collins put that quote there, I can't take credit for it. You know, the only thing that is constant is change. If you read the article in the Telegram Gazette just the other day, the new, relatively new CEO of Hanover Insurance, Jack Roach, told collected business people in Worcester that you can't, to prosper, you can't have a static strategy. And then Mr. Collins also put this, I don't tend to quote myself in my presentations, but, you know, we want to be clear with the community that we require additional resources beyond a status quo budget to achieve our strategic priorities and goals.
Gee, I knew you were going to say that.
Absolutely. So now it's a quote. So, you know, what is this focus? So we have this five-year plan that I referred to a moment ago, if you could advance one more. You know, this is what is going to best support our students. It meets the community's expectations because the Portrait of a Shrewsbury Graduate and the strategic priorities were based on lots and lots of feedback from parents, from community members, from our students, from our staff. It was a very thorough process that illustrated this is what people want from their schools. So our job is to figure out how to best deliver that. And what I'm saying to the committee and to the community is that although there are lots of things we can do with our current level of resources, I have a hard time seeing how we can deliver on what we're being expected to do over the next five-year period without additional resources that are targeted towards those things. And so we have, you know, for next year and in future years, we're looking at what is it that these strategic investments need to be to achieve that vision, strategy and goals? We have a set of strategic investments. This is just a summary table that shows how those will be broken down across personnel and contracted services, instructional materials and technology. Overall, it would be about 1.97 million of additional dollars that would be, need to come through the appropriated budget. We also are identifying close to $400,000 that we think we could do through other sources of funding. We want to continue to try to maximize that to the greatest extent we possibly can. And again, this is an example, this is an illustration of the pent-up demand that we see that we have. So what I'll ask is my colleagues to take us through these different strategic priority areas, starting with one that obviously is very important, given we're still a growing community, and that's space and resources to support effective learning.
Okay, thank you. So this first goal that we had as part of our strategic priority plan and our two-year district goals was to provide a new communication tool that would more easily explain school finances and our budget to the larger community. And you heard a presentation from the president of ClearGov just a few weeks ago, which is that web-based product that we're in the pipeline. We have state grant funding actually through the town manager's office and the community compact grant to fund that for the upcoming year. That's why this $12,500 is in that other funding sources category, so we don't need any local appropriation for that for fiscal '20. And this would be a pilot year. It would be a year of training for our staff in terms of how to upload information, how to adjust it, how to use potentially in future years, a budgeting tool that they've just recently developed. And so going forward, if we feel like this is an effective tool, then we would have to shift and take on that cost as a community and those dollars would have to shift over in a future year budget to the local operating budget. But this is how we plan to, for the upcoming year, fund that particular goal. The second one is to complete a pre-K through preschool through grade 12 space and enrollment study. And we would have to contract with an outside consultant, an architect, to assist us with that, to help us assess our future needs. Of course, we're very excited about the Beal School project and the space that will provide on a K through four basis and meet our needs going forward. But we need to take a step back now and look at the other ends of the district, both preschool and high school, where we do have pressure as was mentioned earlier. And so that cost is estimated to be $150,000 and there is funding within the Beal School project. That was part of the feasibility study of appropriation that was made. And so we're looking forward to getting that project done with a portion of the Beal School appropriation. That's why again, it's in that particular category. The last one in this slide is in terms of resources to support effective learning is adding another high school science teacher for the upcoming year. This is also just part of, we happen to have a faculty member who is retiring and teaches in both disciplines, both science and math, which is really unique and difficult, very difficult to find. And so the plan would be to replace that person and hire a new math teacher and then also hire a science teacher in addition to that and help us with class sizes and also offering the right amount of sections of each of the science courses that we need for that growing enrollment. These next two, the first goal here is a goal of eliminating shared staff between the high school, Sherwood and Oak Middle Schools. Right now, we have a number of staff who travel, who teach music, foreign language or art, and they're traveling between those three schools. You know, on the one hand, it might sound efficient that you have a teacher doing that, but there is also inefficiencies in that, that you lose travel time and the high school schedule does not align with the middle school schedule. And so when you're sharing staff, you know, it's difficult to leverage the total time of that individual when you've got two different school schedules to try to meet. So it would afford all three schools much more flexibility and potentially course offerings like you heard from the directors, the music and art director earlier this year, if we were able to hire 3.5 additional teachers is what we think it would take to eliminate that shared staffing and provide those resources to each of those three schools. And then finally would be the addition of another school counselor or AKA guidance counselor. Again, this is to address growing enrollment at the high school and provide better caseloads for the school counselors and also so that they might shift some of their work into assisting students planned through and assess their own interests going forward beyond college and maybe some career exploration and do a little bit more work in that area. So that would be another $65,000 budgeted for another school counselor.
The second strategic priority is about learning environments where everyone's success matters, which is really about finding ways for all of our kids to be able to get the kind of learning supports that they need to be successful. Has Ms. Belcita to speak to the suggested strategic investments in this category?
So first off, we're looking at over the next few years to have 50% of our faculty to have training regarding cultural proficiency and teaching practices. So we've had two small groups attend cultural proficiency seminar series offered through our collaborative, Asabet Valley. We plan to grow our practice by contracting with an agency like ABC to provide these trainings. As an example, our regional youth health survey that was conducted with our students was disaggregated by race, economically disadvantaged students, immigrant refugee status, and looking at that in a limited scope right now, we clearly see that further work is needed in the area of equity. We would like to conduct an equity study over the next couple of years and we will contract with consultants to promote and conduct this racial equity assessment. We seek to increase our staff knowledge in the area of cultural proficiency at an individual and organizational level. The district needs this. Um, the district needs this assessment. We need a customized implementation plan and professional development opportunities, um, that would ensure all of our staff policies and practices provide an opportunity for effective interactions among our students, our educators and community members. Um, the next thing is we'd like to procure and develop a tracking, um, tool with key metrics around high needs. And when we talk about high needs, we're talking about a subgroup of students that are likely to miss educational milestones. And the data is broken down by race, ethnicity and other demographic groupings. Um, right now in the district, um, when we took a look at this earlier in the year, out of 6,214 students, we had 1,114, 117 students that, uh, met this criteria. So, um, the last piece on this slide is to procure research-proven intervention for our high needs. And this is, um, learning and development, so it's possible for every student. We must adapt, um, to the diversity of our community and allow students to see their lives reflected in curriculum, instruction, materials and school practices. Okay. So on this next slide, uh, we're talking about specific personnel needs. And so to improve the educational services to special education students at the elementary level based on projections from the past three years. And at the next meeting, um, I can go into some more detail, but right now, based on these projections, um, we see the need for one severely licensed special education teacher and one moderate special education teacher. Um, also by June of 2020, at least 50% of all of our staff, um, will have participated in professional development regarding inclusive practices. So what we are aiming to do, um, is enhance our shared understanding and ability to engage in inclusive and culturally proficient practices, the skills, habits and mindsets of social and emotional learning and mental and behavioral health of all. Um, because as we know, educational excellence cannot exist without educational equality. And now I'll turn it over to Amy to start our discussion on the enhanced well-being for all and I'll jump in at, I think, the next slide.
Thanks. So I know you've heard a lot about social, emotional learning. And this slide essentially summarizes some of the investments we'd like to make, uh, that mirror what we would do in terms of improving our academic program. Um, so, uh, we have several stakeholder groups in the district currently looking at current practices of social, emotional learning. We were fortunate to get a grant from the state to participate in a network of districts, um, through the Excel, um, program. So we've been working with the Rennie Center and, uh, with representatives from the state to kind of take a look at what we mean by social, emotional learning, um, and high-quality PD that relates to, to that domain. Um, we've got a group from the high school going to William James or the New Teachers 21 organization, thinking about an implementation plan with this partic- particular focus on secondary level. Um, and we have some in-district groups, both at the school level and at the district level, um, inventorying current practices and making recommendations about, um, who are the key players in, in teaching and modeling a social, emotional practice? And where do kids get to apply those skills? And what are some resources that we need to provide in order to support staff, um, in implementing them? So we anticipate that we'll have some recommendations at the end of this year to come back and give you more details about, but, uh, that first line item kind of speaks to what will the materials we need, um, in, in our, the further SEL curriculum. And the second piece speaks to kind of how we provide training for staff. So we have a number of, um, opportunities, kind of, for example, responsive classroom at the elementary level or, uh, the advisory program and model that's being piloted at the middle school level. Um, but within those two structures, we also need to kind of think about where are some particular skills that we need to help kids understand, um, in order, in, in practice? So for example, we know that self-regulation is a key part of minimizing anxiety and being able to identify emotions and then think about how to manage them is important. If you have a designated meeting time, you still need some materials to guide a teacher in how we help kids get consistent messages about how they know, kind of, where they are on the thermometer and what they should do about it. Um, so the second piece speaks to kind of staff training. Um, the other piece, uh, line three speaks to kind of a pilot that we have going this year at Floral Street School and the high school, where we're looking at, um, how we could use survey tools to help kids identify themselves, you know? Where do they see their strengths in various SEL competencies? Um, and then how we can use that to generate caseloads of kids to monitor? Um, or how we can use feedback from the aggregate to think about where we need to make the most of our investments? So do we need to look, for example, at, um, decision-making? Or do we need to look more at self-regulation? Um, collecting some data from students at those two levels is helping us think about the whole idea of SEL assessment. And finally, uh, the school start time committee will be convening to kind of look at some recommendations around, um, changing transportation planning and, and looking at whether, uh, the costs and benefit of, of making a switch to our start, start times, um, to allow, as you know, kids at the high school level to have a little bit more sleep and our early risers at elementary to kind of maximize their learning too. Uh, so that's, that line item there speaks to that.
So the next few, uh, items talk about counseling and mental and behavioral health supports and our thoughts, our initial thoughts right now over, um, the school year and obviously moving forward into the next couple of years. So what we're looking to do right now is to focus on how, um, counselors and behavioral and mental health supports play a vital role in identifying, supporting and intervening when students exhibit mental and behavioral health challenges in the school environment, um, whether it's counseling, crisis intervention, family engagement, engagement or care coordination. Um, so what we're looking to do right now is add, um, adjustment counseling at the middle school level at Sherwood specifically. Um, we're looking at the need truly at the elementary level to put more across our elementary schools. And right now, we're looking at possibly, um, the need for three additional staff, um, across five buildings. And then also, um, an adjustment counselor at our high school. Um, these roles are going to be pivotal in the next, uh, few years. The initial, um, information that's been obtained, especially from the Risk Youth Health Survey, indicates, um, as you know, and you've heard us talk about, that our students are reporting stress as their top issue and that suicidal ideation and attempts are also occurring at concerning levels. Our faculty advisory council, as well as our paraprofessional advisory council, have reported to administration this year that social, emotional, mental and behavioral health needs of our students are top priority for them as they continue to see students who require support around self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, relationship skills and social awareness. So our counseling and mental and behavioral support will be key, um, to the overall well-being of our students' success in the coming years.
The next slide speaks to, um, some of the input that we received from other district leaders. So one of the privileges I had in my first year in the role last year was to work with the physical education department. And as you know, as we approach the budget season, sometimes we recommend kind of the best of the worst ideas when we have to close a budget gap. And we lost our grade four teacher, uh, health teacher. Um, we are fortunate in Chusbury that we have middle school teachers and Sherwood could be considered in the elementary span. So we felt that that was, um, you know, that cut was offset by some other personnel. But one of the things that we've really benefited from is having some fresh eyes on, on our, uh, system this year in the person of the new PE, Health and Family Consumer Science Director, Jeff Lane. And, um, when he looked at our programming and certainly as he became involved in some of our social, emotional learning initiatives, um, his perspective really is that, uh, the health curriculum plays a, a really important role in addressing some of the mental health issues that we've seen identified in some of our survey data. So, um, we'd like to see, uh, re- restore that position at, at grade four. Um, in addition to that, um, we are working to revise some of that health curriculum to make it more relevant and updated. It's been a while since that's happened and, um, the health department has been looking to see what are the progressions of topics across levels. Um, so in addition to looking at kind of the SEL materials that would live, um, within the classroom teacher piece, we're looking also at revising materials within health in general.
The next, uh, category, our last and fourth strategic priority is, uh, connected learning for a complex world, uh, which is, uh, a lot about trying to find ways to get students learning outside of the walls of the high school, um, and, uh, more connected to, uh, the world beyond it and thinking about their, their future plans. Um, the first line item here, uh, uh, was on the, uh, initial budget request last year, uh, for an additional assistant superintendent position that would be focused on building community partnerships as well as supporting, uh, well-being in a variety of ways. Uh, that is not in the request for the appropriated budget. However, uh, we are seeking some outside funding for that and I, I'm cautiously optimistic we'll have some news to share in the near future, um, relative to that. Uh, but combined with that also would be, uh, through a potential partnership, uh, of Vane, uh, cause one of the things we've heard from our faculty and, and administration is getting kids out requires transportation and, uh, you know, with, with traditional school bus transportation, that's often difficult to do during the school day. So that could provide a, a, a level of flexibility to get our students out into different kinds of, uh, quote-unquote, real-world experiences. Um, in addition though, this obviously isn't in Ms. Clodder's, uh, area of expertise relative to curriculum and instruction. Um, and so she'll talk about some of these other, many of which are mandated changes that are remaining to come from the state relative to curriculum changes.
So the good news about curriculum budget is that there's usually not a curriculum crisis, right? We have some predictability in terms of what our costs are. Um, and at the same time, if we have a system that embraces continuous improvement, then we need to continually invest in the learners that we have before us. Uh, so we need to update our curriculum and we also need to be, uh, responsive to kind of the innovators in our system. And for us, our innovators are our teachers. So, uh, what I'm going to speak to in the next couple of slides has to do with kind of teacher investments, um, investments in tools that allow teachers to collaborate or team investments. Um, and also kind of some traditional resources that we can anticipate built into any curriculum budget over time. So when you look here at, um, the appropriated budget for, uh, state changes in civics education, uh, that reflects the new social science standards, um, and the history changes that, uh, have come from DESE. Um, they would like us to implement fully a new curriculum next year, um, with a priority specifically on grades three, five and eights to include civics education. Um, we've slowed it down a little bit to think about how we can keep the best of what we've been doing and how we can adjust things across levels. Um, and to be honest, that's kind of a new thing for us to collaborate across levels. Um, and since some major units are shifting, for example, um, you know, grade eight had had some world civilization that would now move to the high school, um, we're gonna have to foster some collaboration that we haven't in the past. Um, so that, uh, $25,000 there speaks to some of those changes that we anticipate making as part of history and social science. Um, we, one of the things we can anticipate is that we're going to have to, um, add t- teacher training when we add more AP classes. Um, and so we need to put some more money into that, given some of the turnover that we've had with T P, people who have been teaching AP, um, AP, sorry, in, [laughing], English, science, um, and also math this year. So that number is a little bit higher than it typically is because we have, um, new teacher training demands in, in three content areas at the high school. Um, when Brian was sitting with me last year to talk about our curriculum instruction and technology budget, we talked about the aging projection systems that we can see some of the first systems that came online now fading. Um, so the next item reflects kind of investing in the computer lab at the high school with that increasing operating speed and capacity in mind. Uh, Todd was talking about, uh, the gaming piece and how the, um, arrow hives kind of helped facilitate some of the gameplay and practice, but we need to look at some of the hardware systems too. Um, and finally, the projection, sh- projection devices that facilitate some of the online learning through the iPads need to be replaced. And so that's, um, the last item that $200,000 is addressing. And the next slide. You can, you heard, um, from the science presentation, kind of, uh, what's entailed, uh, in terms of making some of the switches to the new practices and science standards. And when we think about, um, how we're going to make that shift in social science, we're starting again with the practices. Um, and one of the things that's helpful about that is that that was the way we approached math, the way we approached science. And yet for social science, particularly at the elementary level, it integrates English, language arts and social science. And because we have, um, very busy, uh, elementary educators that are generalists, in other words, they teach all the content areas and their focus is on really developing strong readers and mathematicians, um, we need to think about integration because if we add up what we've advised teachers to focus on, you know, 90 minutes of math, 90 minutes of ELA, this much more science, there's not a left room [laughing], left for social science unless we look at integration. So we really need some outside expertise to help us consult and think about, how can we take a new look at some of our English, language arts curriculum with both the civics piece in mind and also social science? Um, and that work will help us also move closer to a model that, um, embraces project-based learning, particularly when it has to do with community involvement or community service. The science curriculum piece, um, those are just the materials, uh, that it's going to take, both the online subscription for mystery science and STEM scopes at the middle school as well as some of the physical materials that, um, facilitate some of the design thinking that you saw in action at the presentation that, uh, our teachers made. Um, and as I'd mentioned, kind of the value of integrating and, and developing some project-based learning, um, we've appropriated some money for in-district training, some sending people to conferences, um, looking at what are some existing models and units that we might add to our curriculum to get closer to a portrait of a graduate model across levels that give kids more consistency. Right now, we know we have lots of bright spots where kids are, um, experiencing high-leverage projects and, and a high degree of agency, but we don't have that consistently. So that gives us, um, some time to develop some PD around that. And finally, um, we've looked at what are the materials that are going to be needed in order to support some of those shifts in thinking? Um, so those two, those last two line items are related. One of the things that came out from, uh, the district leadership team is, um, you know, over time, we've really sacrificed kind of and, uh, limited the, sending people out to conferences. Um, and while we have a high value of collaboration and we have real innovators in-house, we've not had a lot of opportunities to tap into networks beyond, um, kind of Ed, Ed 21. So we're thinking about how we could build in a modest budget for, um, professional networks kind of beyond our system because some of the things that, um, are coming out of those networks are really helpful to advancing some of our strategic priorities.
So this last category is, is not a strategic priority per se, but we know that we also, and you know, year to year, we have things that were mandated to do. Um, and so I'll ask Ms. Belcedo to speak to some things in the special education, people personnel services realm, uh, that we believe regardless of what happens, we're going to need to fund. Um, then asking, uh, Ms. Malone to speak to, uh, something that we'll be bringing to you in more detail, uh, based on a study relative to our organizational capacity, um, to meet the expectations that are, that are demanded of us. Uh, but I'll ask Ms. Belcedo to speak to those positions.
So the first position that you'll see is an educational learning center coordinator. And right now, we feel as though this position will be needed at Parker Road Preschool, um, in working with Lisa Robinson, the principal, as well as Kristen Herrick, the director of specialized programming, and, um, Megan Bartlett, the assistant director for special education, looking at the level of need of the preschoolers right now in the program and the projections coming in from early intervention. Um, just as an example, right now, we're at 25 in that particular classroom. So we know that we will, um, need, uh, position, um, next year. Um, as far as the next one, um, we are looking at caseloads across the district. Um, and with Mr. Buzidlow and Kathy LaRache, the, um, high school special education director who's, um, semi-retired right now, um, we have determined that the caseload right now at the high school is anywhere from 15 to 28. And also with our incoming eighth graders into the high school next year, we're projecting, um, a need for a moderate special education teacher at the high school. Um, again, in talking with Noelle Freeman, the director of nursing, as well as, uh, Mr. Buzidlow, um, we also are looking at, uh, nursing need. And right now, we're, um, looking at the need for .7, um, due to increasing medical complexities also. Um, 2.7, so we have two and 2.7 nurses for approximately 1,800 students. It would mirror the support currently at our middle schools, which is 1.4 nurses for approximately 1,000 students.
So, um, you've heard me speak before and Mr. Collins speak as well, um, that we have some drivers to our, uh, operations that are coming from outside of us. One of those is data that's coming from the, um, Department of Education. Some of that data is, uh, surrounding who are our high-needs students and the analysis of that. But they're also requiring more data from us, um, more reporting and, and it's more, more detailed and usel- utilizing certain platforms. And we also have the size of the district impacting both the central office and special education office operations. So we, um, contracted with a consulting group from UMass to, um, meet with our staff. They're comparing benchmarks to, um, other communities and have interviewed staff, um, both at the central office and the special education office, uh, around questions about time, capacity, technical skills and training, opportunities to improve efficiency, ways to better serve, uh, the staff, ways to better serve our parents. ways to better serve our parents and the community that looks to central office and special education office for support, and also to look at any outdated practices that we may still have in place. So you'll be hearing more about that in probably in March timeframe, but we are anticipating that there will be a need for either a reorganization or additional staff. And so we have that item in the operating budget just because so many of these things are mandated. There are mandated services through the special education department, or it's mandated that we're looking at certain data from the state, or it's mandated that we report certain information to the state. And I also wanted to take this opportunity just to speak overall. You heard many of the individual requests were involving staff requests, FTE. And if, I think it was one of the slides earlier, the summary of strategic investments by category. Personnel was close to 1.5 million in our requests of our strategic investments. We're in the people business. Eighty-three percent of our FY '20 investment is about staff. That salaries, we are teaching students, we're supporting families, we're supporting guardians. This is all to do with people and we have to have the proper personnel in place to support that. All of the things we've talked about, all of the strategic priorities really can't happen without staff resources devoted to them. So I did just want to take a moment to mention that as well.
Okay. And just to provide another recap of the strategic priority investments, you saw a chart earlier by category, personnel, equipment, and the like. This takes the same information that you just heard about, all the details about, and summarizes it by strategic priority. And so you can see at the top, the four strategic priorities listed and the funding, you know, it's distributed, you know, fairly even across the four strategic priorities. And then the fifth category, Dr. Sawyer mentioned, that the other necessary priorities are just mandated to do. So again, $2.36 million of resources that we're looking for in order to meet the objectives that were set forth for us in partnership with the community to bring the district forward. Of that $2.36 million, eighty-three percent of it would be from the operating budget or town appropriation, and 17% of it would be from other sources. Again, seeking grant funding primarily or, you know, state or private grant funding along the way. So we'll continue to do that. You know, this is not just an all-ask-at-town meeting. We do continue to look for other revenue sources along the way. So if we want to make progress, we need some additional resources. These last two pieces of information are just some charts that show, again, kind of a time span. And what this first chart does is the blue bars are what the superintendent's initial budget recommendations were back in each of these fiscal years, going back to fiscal '09. And then the red bar would be actually the final resulting appropriation on a percentage basis. And you can see that, you know, there's always a gap between, you know, what's requested and what's provided. And that gap varies depending on the year, how big or small it is. And then on the far right, you can see in the green bar is the fiscal '20 status quo budget, if you will, at 4.69%. So this is a little bit different. It's not like an even comparison here because we've kind of broken into two parts. So I'm going to show you the next slide in a minute. But 4.69% is the status quo budget. Right now, the town manager, Mr. Mizikar, has released his initial budget and made that public. And it calls for a 3.29% increase for the school department budget. And of course, that will change along the way, hopefully, you know, increasing a bit depending on how revenues and expenses shape up from his perspective and new information on state aid potentially. This chart here shows, it just adds in all the strategic investments for the town appropriation. It brings a percentage from 4.69 to 4.7 up to 7.7. So it's an additional 3% for all of those things that we just detailed for you. And so that does create, of course, a larger gap. And I think that's all we have for presentation and information.
So we thank you for your attention. We know that's a lot of information at once. This is by far the most detailed presentation we make of the year. I appreciate you bearing with us as we try to illustrate both what it takes to take, you know, an existing program that's complex and bring it forward, as well as make these various investments in areas that the community has said, these are where we want to focus our time and energy and ultimately our resources. With that, we're obviously happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. I'll ask questions and comments. Mrs. Fritz.
Thank you. I really like the way this is laid out. You can tie in a status quo, we all know what that type of budget is, but then looking at what we need to move the district forward. I mean, a lot of work was put into Portrait of a Graduate, looking at strategic priorities and goals. It's what the community wants. It's what students, parents, teachers want. So we're looking at a budget based on how do we get from A to B with guidelines. We know what we need to do, but we need funding to get there. So I think this lays it out very well for anyone who's looking at it and maybe isn't familiar with school budgeting. So I think it's very, very well done. Two questions on the van that's going to be potentially. Do we need a driver for that van? Is that a potential additional FTE? Or is there someone in-house? Have we even thought that far yet?
Yeah. I know you have some experience with that previous district, so you can speak to that, Mr. Collins.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely. So the, you know, the vehicle that we're anticipating purchasing would just require a regular driver's license so that any faculty member or counselor could drive, but wouldn't require, you know, a dedicated driver. There might be, depending on, you know, the time of day or the programs that we're running, that we may have to look for driver services so we're not taking a staff member out of the facility. So it could go either way, but the vehicle that we're going to purchase is not going to require any specialized licensing. It would be anything that, a vehicle that anybody could drive. And that's the model, as Dr. Sawyer has mentioned, that, you know, a lot of vocational schools use that their teachers are driving their students to off-site work projects or even, you know, those types of vehicles are used for college visits.
Right.
Or businesses. So that's what we're anticipating.
Okay, thanks.
And if that goes forward in terms of being the, we'll provide a much more detailed piece, obviously, to the committee at that point, but we're working on some outside funding for that.
Great, thanks. And my second question is around the social, emotional. I mean, we're really, we need to look at children, teachers, everyone holistically. So we're doing really good work. We have groups working on it. I think it would be great, I don't know if it's just me, but if we could have a presentation while we go through the budget to talk about what's being done, where we're at, just to give us a better understanding in the public, how much work is going into this and why these types of additional supports are needed. I think it would just add some clarity. I don't know how anybody else feels, but I think that would be helpful.
Dr. McGee.
Yeah, I agree with Sandy on this. I think that there are a number of things that contribute to increases in the cost of providing an education. And one is just the scope of services provided. And while I think most of us are used to the idea that there's going to be an element of behavioral sciences applied to students with IEPs, the fact is that the behavioral services that are essentially moving into the rest of the education system seem to be increasing. It would be very nice for us to quantify that and to get a sense as to how much of the budget and how much this is increasing per year so that we can better explain this to the community. Because this is, this is an inflator. It's an expansion of the scope. Can I make another comment?
Go ahead.
While I'm at it, I have to say, this is one of the best budget presentations I've heard in my nine years on the school committee. And I'm particularly pleased with the idea that you're providing perspective regarding the fact that the town appropriated budget is not the whole enchilada, that there are a lot of expenses that come from the town or from other sources that contribute to the, to the cost of the schools. And particularly that all of these other sources are essentially flat. So that when we look at what percent the town appropriated budget is going up by, part of that is the fact that most of the normal inflation is being shifted to the funds that are coming from the town itself. And that, that is intentional. It is not an oversight. It is not the inability to apply for grants. It is a conscious decision on the part of the state to make the town of Shrewsbury pay a higher percentage of the amount of money that is spent on its local school systems. And so I think you illustrated that well. Thank you.
Mr. Wensky.
Yeah, just to add to that, I appreciate the level of detail in this report. It's a very easy read, although a lot to consume. It's the understanding, you know, even for somebody that is new to school budgeting, to understand that it's more than just the appropriated budget that funds the school system. I think that's really important to note. I also like that we've aligned our budget investment needs with our strategic priorities, something that was a, a community-wide collaboration with, you know, parents, caretakers, students, faculty, staff, educators. A lot of time went into that. And I think to see on paper, you know, where our greatest needs are to achieve those priorities, I think are really important. And this becomes essentially, from my perspective, a living document, you know, where, where are our greatest needs to achieve those priorities? And essentially, what you've done is provided us with a kind of a gap analysis, you know, to focus in on where, you know, our needs are most to make the product of education the best it could be. So thank you so much.
I just had a quick comment there. One thing I meant to say in one of those last, showed the difference between the status quo budget and, you know, the strategic priorities piece. It is not my analysis that the town will be able to afford to do all of this in one year. That would be terrific if they could, and if there were some windfall that came into play, but that's not really realistic to expect. Our hope would be that between what we're able to do with the various sources of revenue as we look closely at how this year is running. Right now, I don't anticipate we'll be in a situation where we need to be considering cuts, which obviously, when we're not spending time and energy doing that, that's a good thing. And that, you know, to some degree, that we'd be able to finance some of these strategic investments in fiscal year 2020, the greater we can, the better off we will be. But I think it's also important for the committee to understand that this is not, this is something that we're going to need to be doing over time. And so having this conversation and making sure that there's clarity around what we believe the investments that are needed, and then having a conversation about how we can find the resources to make those investments is going to be very important.
Mrs. Konzono.
Yeah, I was actually going to ask a question around that. So, and I think the, the second thing that comes to mind then is about like the ranking of strategic, the strategic investments. I, I see they're not ranked in any order, there's, are not by numeral, so, and I'm going to expect that that was deliberate.
That is correct.
Right.
And that's something actually that, you know, having presented these and knowing that we'll be asking, you know, you'll be holding a budget hearing at some point, we haven't formalized which date that is in terms of the initial budget hearing, you'll be soliciting feedback on the budget. And certainly, one of the things that we'll be looking for and we'll be doing internally is with the understanding that there will be some things likely we'll not be able to fund, what would be the priorities, you know, in year one, if we're able to fund them. They're all priorities to a degree, and so we're reluctant to say one is, we can do that finely.
Right.
But, you know, there's no question that there are some things, especially as we're looking at enrollment pressures, and especially as we're looking at some of these issues relative to student emotional and behavioral health. I would say off the top of my head, those are the two areas we're going to have to look at most closely in terms of doing something right away.
And if I, a comment I had to make is I was struck by the language that Megan and Amy used about this customized implementation plan. I mean, you talked about it in your, and that's what these strategic investments remind me of, that it's a customized implementation plan, customized to meet the needs of the district and the students and the staff and the faculty. And the implementation part is kind of on our side, is the resource piece, both here at the school committee level and at the town level. And that's the piece that we're going to have to figure out as this process goes along. But I feel like we have a really good customized plan in place for next year and maybe, you know, a few years down the road. But it was, again, to echo my colleagues, just really, really helpful and detailed and makes me really excited about what we can do for students.
I'll just add on that I appreciate breaking down tonight's presentation by strategic investment. Obviously, it's a good news story that we're not looking at making cuts, which is a different situation than this district has been in many a budget cycle over. So that is certainly refreshing. When I look at the different pockets of strategic investments into this committee, put a great deal of thought in, especially with the support of central office staff, into our five-year strategic priorities. We know where we want our district to go in the coming years. And we have discussed many times the fact that getting there, achieving those goals, is going to require significant investment. And unfortunately, as Dr. Sawyer noted, we're not going to be able to make all of these investments at once. But I appreciate being able to see the level of detail and thought that has been put into each to give this committee and to give the public that's, that window into what the choices are in front of us. You know, it's, it's often said about municipal budgeting, that what communities fund is what communities value. And unfortunately for us here in Shrewsbury, we value a great deal more than we're going to be able to fund. So though we have a good news story in that we're not looking at cuts, we do certainly have difficult decisions ahead in terms of how we want to prioritize these investments, all of which have their place and all of which are important and all of which are a part of our strategic vision for 2022. So I thank you to you, Dr. Sawyer, and the entire central office team for the level of detail in this presentation. And I'll just close by noting to the community that we are certainly interested in receiving ongoing feedback throughout this process. There will be a public hearing at a future date, and certainly, this is something that will impact the whole community. So we look forward to whatever feedback folks like to offer. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is under new business. It is a, an informational update on the Assamet Valley Collaborative. I'll speak slowly so the superintendent has time to get back here. By way of background, the state law governing educational collaboratives requires four updates each year to member school districts. This update will reference two required documents that must be shared with member school committees annually, the annual report and the annual financial audit report, both of which are included in our materials. And we also actually have a print copy this evening as well of what I believe is the annual report. So when he gets logged in, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sawyer.
Well, as my screen's coming up, essentially, the document, I do appreciate the quality of what the collaborative has done each year in terms of its annual reporting, it's a lot of information there that gives a sense of a lot of the programming and resources they provide to us. And then as far as the financial statement, the collaborative is in good health and really no issues that the auditor had. I was present at the board meeting when it was presented, and, you know, they're very pleased with the quality of, you know, what's happening in terms of where the resources are and the amount of resources that are in reserve, is it in a healthy place? So that gives all the member districts confidence that we're in a good place. And they monitor that closely in terms of how, you know, revenue's coming in based on student enrollment in the various programs and so forth. There's a whole variety of things that are encapsulated within, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the committee has.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Colleagues, questions or comments? Seeing none. The next item on our agenda is under the approval of minutes. We have enclosed in our meeting materials minutes of the school committee workshop held on January 16th and of our regular business meeting held on January 23rd. They have been reviewed by Mrs. Fritz, who is the committee secretary. Colleagues, on either set of minutes, do we have any questions, concerns, objections, or corrections? Seeing none, without objection, those minutes are accepted. We do need to go into executive session this evening. At this time, I would entertain a motion that the school committee enter into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining with the cafeteria workers and for the purpose of collective bargaining with the Shrewsbury Education Association, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes, and to return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening.
So moved.
Second.
This motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Motion requiring a roll call vote to pass. Dr. McGee.
Aye.
Mr. Wensky.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz.
Aye.
Mrs. Konzono.
Aye.